Okay, so getting us started tonight, so we are here for an information session and public hearing for a proposed air permit for Ajax materials. Like I stated a little minute ago, if you're calling in and you want to hang up and join us virtually, if you go to michigan.gov/air, you can definitely join on the public notice page. You're going to see public notice on that right-hand side, or you can just type in the search box Ajax. You're going to find the page and there will be a registration link there. If you want to, you can pop an email over to us at dixonj2@michigan.gov. And I can try to send you the link that way too, after we get through kind of this first housekeeping type of session. But like I said, we did gear this for folks on the phone as well as watching us virtually. So I will go ahead and get started here. So there's a few things we're going to do tonight, and I want to kind of lay the groundwork for how the evening is going to go. So that people understand there's kind of two different portions of the evening tonight. The first thing we're going to do is have an information session. And that's going to be a time when our air quality division staff here at Eagle, talk a little bit about the project that Ajax came to us and proposed that they want to start. And during that, we're going to give you a little bit of information about what they're asking for, what the emissions might look like. You're also going to hear from one of our toxicologists, who I'll introduce in just a minute, and one of our inspectors, who would be assigned to this facility, to kind of give you an idea of what we would be looking at. And then after that, we're going to have a hearing portion. So during the hearing portion, it's not going to be any give and take. There's not going to be a time for questions that'll come before the hearing. So I'll give you a little bit more information on that as we move along in the evening. Before I pass this over to our air quality division director, Mary Ann, I just want to briefly tell you who else I have here with you tonight. So first of all, I should introduce myself. I'm Jennifer Dixon, and I work in Eagles Environmental Support Division. And I support the air quality division in a lot of different outreach things that they do, and one of those is public meetings. So another person that you're going to be hearing a lot from tonight is Ambrosia Brown, or you can also call her Amber. And she's the permit writer for this proposed permit. So she's going to be doing a lot of the talking in a few minutes here. I also have Keisha Williams, and she is our toxicologist that worked on this facility. She's going to be talking with you in a few minutes as well. Dan McGee is our air quality inspector that is assigned to this facility, so you'll be hearing from him tonight as well. So everybody that I'm introducing you to right now is going to be available for the question-answer portion, including one of our air monitoring staff, she's actually our supervisor, Susan Kilmer. So we're happy to have her tonight. She can give you guys any information you have about the outdoor air quality in the area as it exists right now, based on some of our monitors that we have around the state. Then I also am lucky to have Steph Hanks, she is our air modeling person, which I know those kind of sound similar, but what she does is she actually uses a computer model to look at what Ajax has asked for and help us make sure that it's going to meet all of our air quality standards. And so she can answer questions for you about that type of stuff later on. So right now, I'm going to go ahead and pass this over to Mary Ann Dolehanti. I know she is our division director, and she wants to welcome you guys all to the meeting tonight. So Mary Ann, if you want to take it away whenever you're ready.
Okay, can you see me? I think I turned my camera on. All right, perfect. So I just wanted to thank you, Jen, for the introduction, and good evening, everyone. I really appreciate you taking time out of your evening to join us. I know if it's like here, it's a beautiful night, and it's probably the last thing y'all want to be doing is watching something on the computer. But it's really important, as the decision-maker for this proposed air permit, we really value your input, we value the input that we get during these public meetings and hearings, like the one that we're having tonight, especially during the height of the pandemic. We weren't able to get out to communities like we had in the past. So making the most out of these conversations, albeit virtual, became even more important for us. So while this virtual format may not be in the best for everyone, and it can definitely have its challenges, it has allowed us to continue to talk with each other in this open format and for us to continue to engage with communities. And as you'll hear about a little later, we have scheduled an in-person opportunity to accept comment as well. And Jen will talk about that on the date for that in a few minutes. So again, in a few minutes, our air quality staff will be talking with you about what Ajax has proposed and what the Air Quality Division of Eagle has been reviewing. I know proposed permits like this can be complicated, and I hope tonight helps you get answers to your questions and helps you prepare to make any sort of official comments if you choose to do so. So I'll be listening very closely to your comments this evening through our time together. And at this point, I'm going to pass it back to Jen to set us up for the night. But first, again, I want to thank you for being here and participating.
Yeah, thanks a lot, Mary Ann. I appreciate that. You brought up a really good point, and I apologize for forgetting to mention that we do have this other opportunity for folks to present comments next week. That's not going to be like tonight, it won't be, you know, there won't be a presentation or a real meeting or anything. But if people feel strongly about coming in and verbalizing their comments physically into a recording device with us, we wanted to provide that opportunity. So that would be next week on the 11th. We'll talk a little bit more about that later. Also going to probably bore you with all the other opportunities you have to make a comment, just because we don't want folks to feel pressured to necessarily make a comment at the hearing tonight. This might be the first time you're hearing about this project, maybe you're just coming to get information. And so just to remind everyone, this is definitely not the only opportunity you have to make a comment. There's a lot of different ways, voicemail, email, and writing. Like I said, next week, if you really feel strongly about coming in person and voicing your comment, you can do that. So keep that in mind as you're listening along. I also wanted to mention that we did get a request to extend the comment period for this permit. We're reviewing that right now, it's kind of under consideration. So we haven't made a decision on that yet, but if folks are interested in that decision, or we can definitely let you know as the time comes around there. All right, so now to the nitty-gritty housekeeping stuff that I know you've all been waiting for. Your lines will be muted during the meeting portion. So like I said, when we get to the question and answer, you'll have an opportunity to voice your questions, and I'll be able to unmute you, and I'll tell you how that will work in just a minute. And we are recording this meeting, we'll be posting this on YouTube. It will be transcribed, so if you do know someone in your community who is maybe English as a second language and would like to view the recording with written words in their language, that would be an opportunity to do that once the recording is posted, which should be probably, I want to say this week, but it might not be till early next week. So getting to how you want to ask a question. So again, this might not be your only opportunity to ask a question. You can always send us a question via email, give us a call. But for tonight, if you want to ask a question, you're going to use the question and answer box at the bottom of your screen, and go ahead and type in your question. That's usually the best way, you don't have to do that. If you really feel strongly about asking your question verbally, verbally, you can click the raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen when we get to the question-answer portion, and I will unmute your line for you. If you're calling in, because we do have some folks that are calling in, if you want to just type pound two into your phone, what that'll do is it'll just indicate that you're raising your hand and you want to speak. This will go the same one we get to the hearing portion of the night, if you want to make a comment. And I'll go over this again too, just to remind you at that time. So enough from me, I want to pass this over to Amber right now. Amber, if you want to turn your camera on and go ahead and share your screen, you can go ahead and do that whenever you're ready. Looks good.
All right, I'm now unmuted, so you can hear me. So thanks, as Jen said, my name is Ambrosia, or I go by Amber. I am the lead permit engineer, but I was just one of multiple air quality staff here at Eagle who are involved in reviewing Ajax air permit application. So before we get into the details of the project, I'd like to briefly talk about what we do, Air Quality Division, and you know, the air permitting process and how it works, why are we here tonight, right? So we all know that pollution comes from many different types of sources, big farms, fuel-burning vehicles, and various industrial sources. The overall mission of the Air Quality Division is to protect public health and the environment. And we do this by using our authority under state and federal laws to regulate industrial sources. So air quality staff do many different things. For example, we monitor levels of air pollutants. We look at toxics to make sure the public health is protected. We conduct inspections of regulated facilities such as asphalt plants. And we review applications and write permits for sources of air pollutants. Now, we do this to ensure that they comply with the rules and regulations in place to protect public health. The Air Quality Division has authority to permit industrial sources of air pollutants. However, I do want to point out, there are a few items that Air Quality Division does not have the ability to regulate. These include zoning, where a facility chooses to want to locate noise, traffic on public roads. If you want to talk about these issues, you'd need to contact your local government, who may have the authority of that. So I'd like to give a simple overview of the steps the applicant in AQD goes through to get a proposed draft permit ready for comment. So how do we get here? So first, the applicant plans a project. That includes what they want to do, where they want to do it, and how they want to do it. And then the applicant submits a permit to install application to AQD. The application is reviewed by an engineer. The pending Ajax application, that was me. If a project appears to meet the required rules and regulation, the engineer creates a proposed draft permit. So once a proposed draft permit is internally reviewed, it is sent to the company for review. And in this case, the proposed permit is posted for public comment. Public comment is a very important part of the permitting process, especially in controversial decisions of high public interest like this one. So we will collect comments, and once the comment period ends, all the comments received are evaluated. It could potentially impact the permitting decision. So finally, last step, oops, sorry. Finally, the last step is we look at all the comments and we make a decision. This can be either to approve the draft as written, approve it with changes, or to deny the permit. Now, this decision has to be based solely on the proposed project, and would it meet the required rules and regulations related to air? So what is the project you were reviewing for this? Ajax is requesting an air permit to install for a new asphalt plant at 5088 Energy Drive in Flint, Michigan, in Genesee Charter Township. There are several other industrial sources in the area around this proposed location. Some of these include universal coatings, RJ torching, and Genesee Power. Eagles Air Quality Division also permits and inspects these facilities. A few of these have had compliance issues, complaints, or enforcement issues in the past. If you have questions about these, you may want to contact Dan McGee, who's inspector for most of the sources in the area. He will be talking about inspections later in this presentation. Now, as a little bit of background, so you know what we're talking about, all asphalt plants generally have the same process. And I'll walk through this process and then go into some more specific details about what Ajax is requesting. So in general, asphalt's made from recycled asphalt pavement or rap, other aggregate, and asphalt cement. Now, the use of rap not only keeps materials from landfills, but it reduces emissions from some pollutants like volatile organic compounds or VOCs. The asphalt cement is stored in some heated tanks, which are required to have pollution control equipment. So this equipment captures and prevents vapors that include potential odors from getting into the air. These ingredients are then transferred to a drum, which serves to dry and mix the materials. This is done primarily through conveyors and front-end loaders. And then from there, it goes to silos, and then from the silos to trucks, which then haul it away. So where are the sources of emissions in this? So there are potential emissions from burning of fuels in the process. Fuel is burned in the drum to dry the aggregate. It's also burned to keep the asphalt tanks warm. In addition to its potential emissions from burning fuel, there are some emissions from the material handling, including storage, there's some truck loading and traffic. These type of emissions are called fugitive, because they're not captured and then sent to a stack. Now, captured emissions, emissions are captured from the drum dryer mixer in the loadout area, are sent to an air filtering system before they are emitted through a stack. So now that I've given a little bit of overview, I'm going to go through again and show what the equipment actually looks like. So here, this piece of equipment right here with the circle around it, that is the drum dryer mixer. That's the main component in the center of the process. So you'll see that aggregate materials are conveyed to the top of this drum. And then if recycled asphalt pavement's being used, it's conveyed to the middle of this drum. And then asphalt cement is added to the bottom of the stramware, mixed with these other materials. So now we have this product, which is then conveyed to the top of the silos, and it's stored in the silos until it is loaded into trucks. This little thing right here is a big asphalt truck. So as you can see, the scale of these things are quite large. And by the way, the area where the truck is being loaded is called the load-out area. And you'll see that term in our documents, and we might talk about it. So that's what we're talking about. So before we get into the details, the proposed draft permit and the review that took place, I want to talk about what is the purpose of a permit in the first place, right? Air permits are a set of conditions or rules which a company is required to follow. These rules make sure the company will meet all rules and regulations in place to protect public health. When we review a permit to install application, we look at worst-case scenarios and emissions. So although actual emissions would be less, we review what's called potential emissions. Potential emissions is the level of emissions which would be released from equipment if it was operated 24 hours a day, 365 days a year at maximum capacity. That is, unless they're proposing additional restrictions. Now, if they do propose any additional restrictions, these would be included in the permit as a legal requirement. For example, in the proposed permit for Ajax, we are restricting the amount of materials that can be used, or require the use of control equipment to reduce their potential emissions. So while reviewing the project Ajax is proposing, we looked at a number of items. We examined the level of emissions being requested, and based on the level of emissions, remember, these are potential worst-case. We determine the type of technical review needed, including which rules and regulations they're subject to. And at these worst-case emissions, we make sure that the company would still meet all rules and regulations in place to protect public health. As a part of the application, we used a, sorry, as part of the application review, we used computer simulations to predict what the concentrations of the pollutants would be for the surrounding area. So this is called modeling. And we did this for particulate matter and toxics. We also reviewed potential emission control equipment to make sure that they met state requirements. An important part of the review includes comparing potential emissions to their health-based screening levels. Keisha was the toxicologist for this project. She's going to talk a little bit about these screening levels and the rules associated with them.
Thanks, Amber. To reiterate a couple of points that Amber pointed out, the potential air impacts are related to pollutants like carbon monoxide, particulate matter, which are the small particles in the air, nitrogen oxide, sulfur dioxide, and lead. These potential air impacts or the concentrations are, again, what someone in the public might breathe. And these are compared, these amounts are compared to the National Ambient Air Quality Standards, which are health-based. We also call these standards NAAQS or NACS. Next slide, please. The NACS are based off of research studies and designed to protect public health by protecting against health problems like heart and lung problems, learning problems, or premature death. The NACS are also designed to protect sensitive groups. And so these might be people who have pre-existing lung disease or heart disease, for example. Based on predicted air impacts, the proposed emissions would not cause violations to the NACS. Next slide, please. This is a map of what we call the attainment status in Michigan, and I'll walk through it. So the green areas describe or show areas that are meeting the NACS, or are what we call in attainment. The blue and light blue, the dark blue and light blue areas of the map are areas where, based off of monitoring and modeling results, they are indicating that they are not meeting the National Ambient Air Quality Standards. And we call this being in non-attainment. Genesee County specifically is outlined in orange, and that is an area that is meeting the National Ambient Air Quality Standards for all the pollutants. And in addition to this, when we consider the potential emissions from the proposed facility, the area will still be meeting the National Ambient Air Quality Standards. Next slide, please. In addition to the national standards, we also have state-specific health-based screening levels for other pollutants. Sometimes we refer to these pollutants as toxic air contaminants, and some examples are hexavalachromium, formaldehyde, and asphalt fumes. Potential air impacts for these pollutants were compared to, again, the state health-based screening levels. And these screening levels, like the national standards, are designed to protect public health. And the screening levels might be designed to protect against problems like developing cancer or breathing problems. The way that we tend to develop these health-based screening levels is by looking at individual pollutants. Of course, one of the problems with this is people aren't breathing individual pollutants. They're breathing mixtures of pollutants. And so that's one limitation of the rules. However, specifically with asphalt fumes, we look at that as a mixture, and we evaluate it and review it using cumulative risk methods. And this is designed to be protective against developing cancer. I also want to really emphasize that within Michigan, a lot of effort has gone into developing and ensuring that permits are protective of health. And so with that, there are proposed emission limits specifically based to meet the health-based screening levels. Based on the potential air impacts for this proposed facility, the proposed emissions would not violate the health-based screening levels. With that, I'd like to turn it over back to Amber for the rest of the review.
Sorry, I had to get my video back on. All right, everybody hears me? So thanks, Keisha. So now I'm going to go into the summary of the proposed permit conditions for Ajax specifically. So that's what we're up to public comment for, and we're seeking comments, you know, on the actual draft as well as the review. So if you're looking at a draft, we have it divided into different sections. These are called emission units. And the emission units for an asphalt plant include the drum, which is the dryer mixer and the conveyors. There is a section for yard sources that includes stockpiles and onsite roads, cement, asphalt tanks, and silos. And I do want to point out, the silos do include the load-out area loading into the trucks as previously mentioned. So when you're looking at this, we also have included requirements for pieces of control equipment, such as a counterflow drum, air filtration system, AKA baghouse, you might hear that term, load-out control, which I think I mentioned maybe, and vapor condensation and control system. The proposed draft conditions contain requirements to make sure that the company cannot exceed the levels of emissions which were reviewed. So this includes requirements related to the operation and maintenance of the equipment and the emission control equipment, restrictions on the fuels and materials processed, emission limits for specific pollutants, required stack testing, burner tuning, a plan to minimize dust from fugitive sources, as a reminder, that's dust that's not captured and sent to a stack, and also a monitoring plan for recycled used oil. So Dan McGee will now discuss items which he looks at when he's inspecting asphalt plants.
Thanks so much, Amber. First, we're going to look at control equipment. This is a photo of the Ajax Brighton plant in rural Livingston County. It was built in 2018 and is a virtual twin to the one proposed for Flint. At left, the large gray box is a baghouse or fabric filter. It's filled with hundreds of fabric tubes like sacks, and they filter out fine particulates. The small square box at the top of the photo is a knockout box or gravity collector. It knocks out the largest particulates which could otherwise tear holes in the fabric bags. At right is the counterflow drum. Since 2000, we have only allowed this type of drum to be installed in Michigan at new or rebuilt plants. The old style of drums called parallel flow are no longer allowed. This was because they created loose smoke and excessive odors. When the new, better-controlled plants replace the old-style plants, odor complaints are greatly reduced. Next, please. All right, again, the proposed Ajax plant would be almost a twin to the Brighton plant along with the other control devices. It would have control and load-out. That's when the asphalt is being put into the trucks. It would also have control at the top of the silos at right, which is where the finished cavity materials are stored. These areas have been where smoke and odors were observed in the past at asphalt plants. So since 2000, this additional control has been required and new or reconstructed asphalt plants in Michigan to restrict emissions. Next, please. If approved as written, the Ajax air permit would contain stack testing requirements for fine particulate matter for nitrogen oxide and for lead. Next, please. In the current draft conditions, if the facility was to burn recycled used oil as fuel, they would be required to stack test again for fine particulate matter and nitrogen acids again. They would also mean to test for sulfur dioxide. This facility, this proposed facility, has no This facility, this proposed facility has no plans at present to use recycled used oil as fuel. And no plans at present to even build a storage tank for the recycled used oil. However, this most asphalt plants have this optional fuel type allowed by their air permits. Next, please. All right. There, there are a number of ways which inspectors use to check compliance. One is by inspections, usually unannounced. Asphalt plants in Michigan are typically inspected at least once per year. An inspector may also do inspections in response to complaints. Complaint investigation is like a mini inspection. Typically focusing on the area of the plant which might be associated with the complaint. Now I'm going to pass it back to Jen to bring us into the question and answer portion of the night. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Dan. Appreciate you and Amber and Keisha giving us that good overview of things. If I can invite the rest of my panel to go ahead and turn your cameras on. So this is the portion of the evening tonight where we're going to open it up to question and answer. I know we do still have a couple of folks that are on the phone right now. And I'll go over in just a second again, how you can raise your hand if you want to ask a question. But I know as you were listening along, there may have been some times when our staff said, you know. Looking at this or see this. So I just wanted to just mention that the presentation again, this whole evening is being recorded. You can watch it on YouTube in a couple of days. And if it, if you. Want to view that or you want to be notified, you can always get ahold of one of us. And I'll give you the contact information to do so in a little bit. So if you want to have a pen and paper ready to do that. Otherwise, we're also going to be posting the slides on our website. And those will be available too. So if you're thinking like, okay, I know they were saying, here's this asphalt plant. This is what it might look like, but I wasn't seeing it. You can view those pretty quickly. We'll have those either up. If you want to email me later, I can get those right over to you or we'll be posting those at some point tomorrow. Those will be ready to go. So that being said, just to reintroduce folks I have with us tonight. So you already met Amber, she's a permit engineer for the facility. So she is the one that did the main body of this draft permit that we're here to talk about tonight. You just heard from Dan McGee, he will be the inspector for the facility if it ends up being built. And I just realized, I think Amber, you got, you have the old slide on here. And I should have given you the new one because we were going to have Jim Haywood from our modeling unit. But we were lucky enough to get Steph Hanks, but she actually did most of the work. Jim was going to be a fill in for her. So we're lucky to have her back. She scooted back from vacation and got right with us tonight. So happy about that. Also have Keisha Williams from our toxics unit, like you heard from earlier. And Susan Kilmer is our, from our air monitoring unit. So we'll have those folks on with you tonight. Amber, I'm going to go ahead and share my screen over yours a minute here, just so that we can kind of go over how folks can ask questions again. So if you remember earlier, I chatted with you about how you can type your question into the question and answer box. Sometimes that's the easiest way, but it's up to you. You want to raise your hand and ask a question, you can use that raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen. And if you are calling in, you can go ahead and type pound two into your phone and that will raise your hand for me. And I know sometimes we do have some technical difficulties. So make sure to just be patient with me as I get you unmuted. And if I mispronounce your names, I apologize in advance. I'll do the best I can on that one as well. All right. There we go, there's the, there's stuff on there so you guys can see her name in front of you too. All right, so I see that we have a hand raised here. So Mike, hold on one second, I'm going to go ahead and try to unmute you so that you can talk. All right, you should be able to unmute yourself now and be able to talk. So try it one more time. There you go, now we can hear you, Mike.
Okay, can I talk now?
Yeah, that's great, go ahead and ask your question.
Yes, I, there's a number of plants nearby. And I understand that you take accumulation of all surrounding plants and. In, in account when you're measuring during the area. But all of these plants in the area, the three plants in immediate area, all had EPA violations. Do you take into effect that there's probably going to be further EPA violations when you're looking at the amount of pollution in that area?
So it's a really good question. I'm going to actually have Amber talk a little bit about what we consider and what we don't consider when we're looking at an individual permit that comes in. So it's a great question as far as the area is concerned. So Amber, maybe if you could talk a little bit about that. And then Dan, I know you don't handle all of the facilities in that area. So Mike, you might want to, we might be able to talk a little bit more specifically with Dan or with one of our other staff offline about those specific facilities. But it might just be a good idea just to kind of talk a little bit about how we handle compliance situations when we find a facility is out of compliance. So Amber, if you want to get started on that and then pass it over to Dan if he wants to add any words onto the end of that.
I feel like that was a little bit of a loaded question, so I'm trying to figure out which to best approach it. What we look at, so we do not anticipate other facilities being out of compliance, if that's what you're asking. We are looking at the potential emissions from the project in the company of. From the proposed facility is what we review when we're looking at this. And that's what we compare to screening levels.
So I, I think what you're saying is that we don't necessarily consider whether or not other facilities in the surrounding area are in compliance or not in compliance. When we're looking at a permit application for a specific facility. If that, if this company was already existing and it was coming in for a new permit. Then we might consider whether or not that company was out of compliance when we're looking at a permit action. But we don't look at surrounding facilities and whether or not they're in compliance when we're determining this permitting action. So I, I think that's what you're trying to say on that one, Amber. And I want to make sure that Dan, if you can talk a little bit about just how we look at compliance in general for facilities, that would be really helpful, I think.
Certainly, Jen. I'm an inspector and a big part of my job is doing inspections and complaint investigations. At industrial facilities. And when I go there, I bring an air permit or permits. And I bring knowledge of the state and federal regulations that they are also subject to. I make a determination if the facility is in compliance with their state and federal obligations. If a violation is identified, I inform the facility the day of the inspection. And then I write an enforcement notice called a violation notice. Which requests that the facility either immediately take steps to resolve the violation. Or if immediate resolution is not possible. They need to give us a written plan that, that will address the issue. If the company does not avail themselves of reasonable opportunities to come into compliance. Then the district staff like myself will refer the issue to air qualities enforcement section. And the enforcement section will bring the facility into a legal settlement. To compel compliance, which may have penalties upfront. And penalties for future violations of the same requirements. Sorry, I'm sorry if that's some more of a mouthful. Please let me know if that meets what you were looking for.
Yeah, thanks a lot, Dan, I appreciate that. We've gotten a couple of questions in the question box, so this one I'm going to pass to Amber. Amber, this has to do with reporting requirements in the permit. And the question is, how will Ajax materials be required to measure pollutant emissions? Is it self-reporting and estimation? Or will be, or will there be monitors? So you can talk a little bit about what the draft permit contains as far as that goes for me.
Sure. Um, so there is different emission limits. There are short term emission limits, like on an hourly basis, pounds per hour. And then there's like tons per year. And we call, I call that long term. When it comes to the short term pound per hour, we have stack testing requirements, which. Dan had talked about as being proposed in the draft. When it comes to the annual numbers, you know, we look at the worst case capacity situation as I tried to convey. So we basically take the worst case short term and assume it's going out. For as long as they would be allowed to operate. And in this case, they requested annual throughput restrictions. So we have so much emissions per amount that is processed. We limit how much they can process, which then limits how much they can emit. And they have to keep track of the amount that they process. There's record keeping involved there as well as a mission calculation for the ton per year. So stack testing for short term. Record keeping and calculations for the long term with fuel restrictions and throughput restrictions.
So when Amber says throughput, she basically is talking about the amount of something that the company would be allowed to use per year. So when you ask about whether it's self-reporting or whether it is monitored. It's kind of a little bit of both in that that's where Dan comes in is although a lot of the things that the facility would be required to do would be self-reporting. In that they keep their own calculations, they have to keep track of certain things. A lot of that stuff at an asphalt plant is monitored by the machinery that they use to add things to the silos, to add things to the drums. So although it's considered self-reporting in that we don't have a person standing over their shoulder and watching them. Something that's verifiable, and that's part of where Dan comes in in his role after a permit is issued. When he goes to a facility and verifies that the things that they're telling us are true, accurate, and complete. So that was a really, really great question, and I always appreciate that one. I'm going to go back to the phones and Philip Schmider, I'm going to go ahead and try to unmute you. I'm sorry if I'm being a little challenging on that, but you should be able to talk now when you want to. You might have to unmute it from your end and then go ahead and try to speak.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, perfect, you did great.
I noticed, I noticed in Dan McGee's description of the plant that is virtually like the one. That is proposed for construction, he said it is in a rural setting. And I know that recently there was a facility that was rejected from Fenton and from Tyrone Township, that area. It was deemed that the people did not want that. And I'm kind of, I can't understand why the AQD staff or the, the whole operation would be considered. In what is really, it's not a rural setting. It is in a setting where there are many people, public housing. There's some low income apartment dwellings. There are all kinds of facilities. There's a school that right now is closed, but might well be open. And I just can't for the life of me understand. And, and of course, that area around it is predominantly people of color, a large percentage. And so it, you know, those of us that have been familiar with this, I'm on the board of the St. Francis Fair Center. And I, I just can't understand why such a facility would be put this close to this many people. It absolutely makes no sense. It is, you know, find a rural setting, you know, or, you know, I mean, I realize this is a far, kind of like a far corner of Genesee Township. And the border is carpenter road, so they've gotten it away from the people of Genesee Township. But in doing that, they move it closer to the people of Flint. And so I know that the MDEQ was cited in January of 2016. For having implications of racism and in some of the ways they conducted things. And just the whole contemplation of this site being put where it is, is. It just boggles my mind why this would be even a possibility near this close to this many people. It absolutely makes no sense. Thank you.
So that's a really good point, Mr. Schmider, and I appreciate you bringing that up. I, I, you might have missed the beginning of Amber's presentation or, you know, I don't, I think it's a good idea always to just reiterate. And that, that, you know, one of the things that is kind of a limitation for us at Eagle is that when. A facility wants to put in something like this, a company wants to install an asphalt plant or a similar type of facility in an area. One of their first steps that they usually do is either go to the township or go to the city or whatever their local municipality is. You know, whether or not they're allowed to even attempt to build something there falls under typically zoning restrictions. And unfortunately for us in air quality, that isn't something that we can consider. We don't get to decide if a township or a city has specific kinds of zoning. So what we need to do when we get that application in is go through the process that Amber talked about. With bringing in all these staff people that have expertise in certain areas and saying, okay, the company is asking for this. Is this something that is even approvable? What kinds of things do we have to look at? So we have to bring in people like Dan and Amber and Keisha who you heard from. And then we also have to bring in folks like Steph Hanksba, who looks at the modeling. So Steph, I, I do think this is a good opportunity, if you don't mind, unmuting yourself and even sharing that slide that you have about what we do for modeling. Because I think this is always something that's challenging to understand. You know, we're looking at a facility that's not built yet. So how do we even assess what could go on in, in an area if it is built? So I don't, I'm seeing if I can see you over here now, Steph. All right, there you go. If you want to just unmute yourself and if you can share that slide of the modeling and talk a little bit about what your analysis is in, in that regard, I would really appreciate that. Okay, can you see my screen? Oh, maybe that. Does that work? Okay. Um, what I do here, as far as modeling a facility, what we do. When a facility comes in for an air permit, my job is to basically build this facility in a computer program. What I'm showing here on the screen is a receptor grid. Basically, all these yellow dots within this grid. And I did check prior to here and we went out roughly seven miles in all directions from the center of the facility. And we want to basically find out what is the highest impact of any pollutant. Wherever it may be within this region, where is the maximum impact? Because we want to make sure that highest impact, which generally is closer to the boundary of the facility or further in. And that's why you can see, actually, this, this line here kind of outlines the secure property boundary of this Ajax facility. Since there is a secure property boundary where the general public cannot have access to the facility, we do not need to look at impacts within their property boundary. But all these yellow dots, and you can see they're a lot closer together further in. Those are what we call receptors or pseudo monitors. What it is, is we want to know the impact at each one of those locations. So we have thousands of receptors with dynamo modeling grid. So basically what we start with again, building the facility in a, in a computer program. We, we build in any type of emission points they have, whether they be stacks. In this case, there were a lot of roads for fine particulate modeling and for. And for particulate modeling, we did roadways, we did piles, we did the stack emissions. And we want to basically where those impacts are the highest, close, or wherever, wherever they're the highest, we want to make sure that is meeting the federal and standard federal and state guidelines. So that's basically what we do. We do this for each pollutant that the facility is saying that they're going to emit. Like Ambrosia had said, we do look at the potential emissions for the different pollutants. And again, we also include nearby facilities that are emitting these pollutants as well. And also, we do add in the background concentrations that our monitors are picking up. So then maybe if there's some facilities that maybe aren't close enough or that weren't necessarily specifically picked up in the model, that will do a cumulative impact. So get that background level of those pollutants as well. So that's, again, I guess, maybe the short or maybe not so simple, um, description of what I do. Basically, we build the facility like they're saying it's going to be in a computer program. Simulate it, add meteorology to it, and determine, once the weather impacts those emissions, where the highest impact is going to be near this facility and make sure that that overall highest impact is meeting the state and federal limits set in place. Yeah, thank you for that, Steph. I appreciate it. I, I know that's always one of those things when, when we, ever we say it's a computer model and it's pretending to put monitors in everybody's backyard, but it is kind of doing that. I mean, we, since the facility isn't built yet and we're still in that kind of approval process and, and writing up these draft permits, we have to presume sort of the worst case, and we want to make sure that even at that worst case, that the community would be protected. So we have some other questions that came in. This was a really good question too. And it says, if the company is determined to be in non-compliance, how would the surrounding residents be notified? So it's always a good question. I wish I had a really great answer for you. I wish at this point, we had a mechanism where when we wrote a violation notice like Dan talked about, it would immediately send folks that are interested, I know, letting them know. Unfortunately, we don't have that. So what we do is, you know, a lot of times when we write a violation notice, they all go online. If you're interested, you know, I can definitely show you where that would be if this facility gets built. And you would have to kind of be a little bit proactive about looking that up. If it's something really big and it's not just a paperwork violation, something that, you know, if there was, happened to be an upset, which we would hope would never happen. I mean, that is why we designed those permits to be that way. That would definitely be something that we would put an announcement out. We don't really have a site or facility-specific, company-specific mechanism for getting word out on that. So I apologize. I know that's always, you know, not necessarily the best answer. So this one, Susan, I think I'm going to send this one to you. And if you are feeling like maybe there is some more expansion that needs to be done on the answer, then you can pass it along to other staff. But this was an interesting question about attainment. So it says, is the smallest scale for assessing whether an area is in compliance for, or in attainment at a county level? If so, could you explain why that is the right scale? Especially given that many facilities in Flint can essentially be negated by large rural portions of Genesee County. So I know we have certain air monitors. So if you can talk a little bit about what the difference is between those and what Steph does, and then how we use that data to determine things.
Sure. So we do have a monitor in Flint. It's in Whaley Park. And that area is just south of the proposed area. So with that monitor, we measure ozone and PM 2.5. As far as an area being a non-attainment, that can be county, like a county level, it can also be portions of counties. And really, that, that determination of how large an area is, is done by EPA. So they, they make the final determination.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know if that got to all the parts.
No, I think it did. I think it did. And if you-
It also, oh, sorry to interrupt. It's also kind of depends on the pollutant itself. So sometimes based on what kind of pollutant it is, if it's a pollutant that is more of a transport pollutant like ozone, sometimes a partial county will be determined to be attainment, non-attainment.
So we do have some of those on the west side of the state where it's only part of the county. We still have that, right? I'm not misspeaking.
We do. And there's also an area of sulfur dioxide.
Yes.
Non-attainment on the east side that are, it's a portion of a county. So yeah, it's not always, not always based just on a city or a population area. Sometimes it's a portion.
So it's definitely a good question, because I know Susan mentioned transport pollutants. And so obviously pollutants don't know how to stay in lines. So those lines can definitely sometimes look arbitrary, depending on, you know, in what respect you're looking at them. So we have a question on the phone again, so I'm going to go back to the phone. Mr. Zarfeld, I'm going to go ahead and unmute you so you can ask a question. Still have your hand up hopefully here. All right, you should be able to speak now if you want to.
Hello?
There you go. We can hear you. Thank you.
Yeah, all right. My, my question is that the this permit request started out in December of 2020. And the environmental department and the air quality has been looking at it for almost seven months. And I'm with St. Francis Pearson, or I'm the chairman of the board. And we just recently received the notice of that. We've it took 20 days surprisingly for the letter to, to reach us. And I think it would be fair if the public had a longer time, a longer comment period than just to August 16th. That will not even give us a month. And there is a lot of minority neighborhoods and people that are, people are not aware of the, of the issue. So I think in fairness, the, I would ask the air quality department to seriously consider giving us a month. And reasonably, if it took you seven months to evaluate this permit, why isn't it possible for us to have three months or six months to look into it? So that's one question. The other question is, what modeling are you using for these receptor, receptor grids? Because there's modeling and there are all kinds of computer programs. Can you tell me which one you're using?
Yeah, we could definitely do that. Just to respond to your first question, and I'm not sure if you were on the line yet. But I know we did get a request to lengthen the time that the comment period was open, and we are considering that for sure. So we'll let you know once that decision has been made. But Steph, do you want to talk a little bit about what program you all use for your monitoring or your modeling program?
Yes, I can go ahead and do that. Excuse me. We use the, it's actually called AirMod. I know it's really confusing a lot more, but it's the EPA recommended air dispersion model. So it is a computer program that EPA has tested thoroughly and has given their approval on into all the states that we are to use when we do a dispersion modeling analysis. And a dispersing and modeling analysis, again, just simulates, you add meteorology to this computer program. It does a lot of calculations, depending on, you know, air turbulence because of wind, temperature. And it applies all that meteorology to the plumes of emissions that are coming out. And the whole reason for this is, again, what's most important to us is we want to know what that highest impact is. The location and what that number is, so we can compare that maximum impact that this facility with the proposed emissions is expected to have, just to make sure that those are meeting the state and federal guidelines in place.
Thanks, Steph. Appreciate it. So it is seven o'clock and we'd normally be starting our public hearing portion of the night right now. But I do have a couple of other questions that I want to get to before we do that. One, this one's going to go to you, Amber, and this is talking about the control equipment, the facility. And I, let's, I know there's a couple of different ones, so let's just kind of focus on one of them for right now. As far as, you know, is, there's a maximum amount of throughput that the facility would be permitted for if the permit would go out at is, as is. So the question is more around, you know, are we confident in the control equipment being able to handle that amount of throughput? Or can you talk a little bit about how you evaluated what the company asked for and how we ended up permitting that limitation on the throughput that they asked for? And I think you're on mute. Sorry, that's fine. I know it's, there's-
Sorry.
You're good.
I was looking for the button. Um, so we ended up, you know, they have a project. We looked at the short-term and long-term emissions both matter when we're looking at standards and protecting public health. The short-term, when we looked at worst-case scenario, we looked at the capacity of the equipment. And that's 500 tons per hour is what the capacity of that is, of the drum. See, I explained the system so you know what I'm talking about. When it came to the annual number, they actually took a restriction. So it wasn't the maximum capacity. And that restriction was based on what would have triggered carbon monoxide to go over 90 tons per year. Because if they went over nine tons per year, honest, kind of funny that they wouldn't want to have to go to public comment, but they ended up having to go to public comment anyway. So originally, that was the restriction that they were proposing in their application was that they were going to limit the materials. And that's the hot-mix asphalt that was produced. They had, and that was restricted to, and I'm sorry to have to look up the number again, 876,322 tons. We also had secondary limits as well, based on toxic screenings, that they would not process more than 600 tons of hot-mix asphalt paving material per hour or 12,000 tons of hot-mix asphalt per day. So that was the restrictions that we had, and those were selected. So they were past toxics for the short-term ones, and carbon monoxide was the limiting factor for the annual.
All right, thank you. One other question for, I don't actually know who would know this. So Amber, I'm going to pass it to you and just to see if you know, and if you don't, it's, it's fine. But it says, if approved, when could we expect this plant to be built in Flint? And I know when we issue a permit, if one gets issued, a company has 18 months to begin construction. So I don't know if we have any idea when they would be planning on that if the permit is approved, if you've heard. Or maybe Dan has heard, I'm not sure, but if you guys have any information on that, they can provide it. And if we don't, you know, that might be something we have to get back to people on.
I, I think the original plan, they wanted to be, you know, starting construction as soon as they could, was the impression I got. But I'm not sure when they would be having, if this did get approved, of having it up and running either. I think originally they were hoping to get this, get a permit much sooner. I think originally they were going to try to have an, like, right now, have one up and running. So that obviously didn't happen. So I, I can't say like when they would actually be able to get a-
Yeah, constructing these takes a little bit anyway. And, you know, first, we have to get through this approval process, and we're not necessarily, you know, we don't know if we're going to extend the comment period yet. We're still working on that. Then, once we get all of the comments, you know, it takes us time to review them, make sure that we're looking at everything, seeing if there's changes that would be needed, needing to be made to any permit that might be issued. So the process is pretty lengthy. I wouldn't expect that if it did get approved, that they would be running anytime really before next summer. And the asphalt season is, is getting close to being over in Michigan. Because, you know, depending on what year it is, we do tend to get snow earlier, so it does put some limitations on that as well. But, and our permitting process isn't necessarily based on when a company wants to start operations. So we have to make sure we're doing all the due diligence that we need to do to make sure that rules, regulations, and health-based standards are being met for folks. So that being said, thank you guys so much for your questions. We want to get into the actual hearing part of the night. So just to reiterate that the hearing part is when you will have an opportunity to provide comments to us. We won't be responding. It won't be like this was with, with question and answer. To let you know, you do not need to make a comment tonight if you want to make a comment. I know Mr. Zarfeld did mention that the comment period is open to, at least until August 16th. That's where we have it closing right now. We have some other ways that you can provide comments if you're not comfortable with doing that this evening. And we'll go over those a little bit later. But first, what I want to do is make sure that we're moving forward on some of this stuff. So once we start the, the public hearing itself, I will read to you a statement that officially opens the hearing. After that, if you want to do the same thing with raising your hand, either using that hand icon at the bottom of your screen or clicking pound two on your phone to raise your hand, you can feel free to speak your comment when I call on you. Additionally, if you feel more comfortable typing your comment into the chat box, I can go ahead and read that aloud for you as well. So either way, if you want to make a comment tonight, those are going to be the couple of options that you have. So at this time, Mary Ann, if you want to go ahead and turn your camera on, go ahead and get started on the hearing portion of the night. And I apologize for kind of the, the dry, dry value of this hearing statement, but it is to officially start the hearing. Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the public hearing portion of the evening. My name is Jennifer Dixon, and I am with the Environmental Support Division of the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy. And I will be hearing officer tonight. Mary Ann Dolehanti, Division Director for the Air Quality Division, is the decision-maker for this permit application, and will be listening in on the hearing tonight as well. This hearing is in regard to the draft air permit to install for the proposed installation of a new asphalt manufacturing plant for Ajax Materials Company here in after Ajax and the request to locate in Genesee Township, Michigan. I have some background information to share before we begin. So the Air Quality Division is responsible for regulating sources of air pollutants to minimize adverse impacts on public health and the environment. The law governing those responsibilities is Part 55 of the Natural Resources and Environmental Protection Act. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to give anyone interested in the proposed air permit an opportunity to provide information the department may use in deciding whether to approve the permit to install or if there are additional issues to consider. Please note the proposed permit to install is still a draft permit. This does not mean the department has already made a decision. Instead, it reflects an initial technical review of the proposal. We hope having the details of the draft permit available will help you in providing comments. Everything in the draft permit remains open for comment and further consideration by the department, including whether the permit will be issued at all. Please recognize the department can only use the information you provide if it relates to the criteria we must use in making a decision. For example, concerns related to local zoning, truck traffic, and noise are not within the department's authority. Some of you may simply want to express your support or opposition to the proposed projects. We'll be happy to make note of your position, but please understand the department is by law not allowed to base our decision on whether there is widespread support or opposition to the proposed air permit. This hearing is being recorded, and your comments will be part of the information the department will consider in making its decision on the proposed air permit. The public comment period is, for the proposed permit began on July 1, 2020, and will end at midnight on July 16, 2021. Additional information and comments may be submitted through that time. After the close of the comment period, the decision-maker will review all written and verbal comments received. All significant air quality-related comments will be considered, at which point a final decision on the proposed air permit will be made. The decision maker may deny the permit, approve as drafted, or approved with amendments. If approved, the decision-maker must specify which provision of the draft permit, if any, have been changed in the final permit and the reasons for the change. In all three of these scenarios, approval, approval with changes, or denial, all interested parties, including everyone who was on the original mailing list, anyone who provided comments during the public comment period, and anyone who attended the public hearing will be directly notified of the decision. This notification will include a letter from the decision-maker regarding the decision, and if applicable, the approved permit. This is not your only opportunity to submit a comment. You may submit a comment anytime during the comment period via voicemail, email, or US mail. I will provide specific information on how to do this later this evening. If you'd like to make a comment tonight, there are two ways to do so. You may do so in writing by typing the word "comment" into your question box and then writing a comment. I will read aloud all comments you submit via the question box unless you state "do not read." If you would like to make a verbal comment, you may raise your hand and I will unmute your line so you can speak. We'll limit your comment time to three minutes. If you are speaking, I'll let you know when you have about 30 seconds left and I'll do my best to address commenters in the order of your hands for raised. But please bear with me as the technique does have limitations to that. Please recognize department staff are here tonight to provide a fair opportunity for you to express your views on the proposed air permit and to listen to those comments. Thank you so much for your attention. I will now begin calling the names of those who have indicated they would like to make a statement. All right. So if you would like to make a statement, like I said, you can feel free to raise your hand at this time. Or you can, I'll give you a couple of minutes if you want to type your questions in or not your questions, I apologize, your comments into the question box. All right, Mr. Zarfeld, hold on one second while I unmute you. And if you can just state your name for the record, I would also really appreciate that and any affiliation that you may have. And you should be able to go ahead and unmute yourself there.
Hello, my name is Ted Zarfeld. I'm board chair of the St. Francis Prayer Center. We are the adjacent property. And we have a lot of clients that come in, we're concerned about the, the quality of pollutants or quality of air that they would be breathing. And we also are representing the minority neighborhood. And even though my comments are not really technical comments that you would consider, I think that the air quality department really has to look beyond the, the technical data here. And this re- permit to build and operate a hot mix asphalt, asphalt plant is really going to be going into a minority neighborhood. The north side of Flint, which is going to really be disproportionate, disproportionately exposed to hazards like pollutants, toxics and orders, which will affect the quality of life. And I know you have ways of monitoring it. But when there's a violation, how long does it take to get corrected? And unfortunately with toxics and pollutants, they're cumulative, they accumulate in the body. And we know they can lead to certain diseases and cancers. So in effect, what we see this is, is really environmental racism. And what we're looking for is environmental justice. So we're asking first for the air quality department to extend the look period. I mean, it took the, the department seven months to do their due diligence. I think the public ought to have equal time to do due diligence and look at this whole question and how it affects them. And this is a pretty technical process you've laid on us tonight, and I appreciate you taking the time and doing it. But it's going to take us a long time to look at it and make sure this whole process is in the best interest of the public. And thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for your comment. We really appreciate that. I'm going to go ahead and unmute Nayra Sharif. I hope I said your name correctly. Should be able to speak whenever. You want, you might have to unmute yourself though.
Hello, can everyone hear me?
Yes, that's perfect.
Oh, great.
So much.
Great. My name is Nayra, oh, hold on a minute, let me slow my hands so you don't see that anymore. My name is Nayra Sharif and I am the director of Flint Rising, which is an environmental justice organization based in Flint, Michigan. And on a personal note, I grew up in the surrounding neighborhood where the proposed plant is going to be at. I actually grew up on Eastmont Drive. And I have a number of issues with the process and the permit itself. According to EPA's EJ screen, the population within three miles of the plant is 54, 54% people of color and 62% low income. In the immediate vicinity of the plant is the largest public housing complex within the city of Flint. And this is an environmental justice community. Eagle EPA's Title VI regulations prohibit Eagle from issuing a permit that will have it the effect of discriminating against individuals based on their race, color, national origin. EPA has also stated that cumulative impacts are relevant determining whether permitting decision will have a discriminatory effect. And so Eagle must conduct the cumulative impact analysis before issuing the proposed permit. A few months ago, there was a permit from Capital Asphalt, which was going to be based in Burton and it was 94% white and like less densely populated. And, and the decision was made not to move forward with that. And, and it's troubling that cumulative impact is not made, is not being used in any sort of decision-making process. For the permit itself, Ajax reliance on ambient air quality monitoring from Lansing and Grand Rapids to determine background concentrations in Genesee Township is improper, improper and misleading because Grand Rapids is like over a hundred miles away and that should not be used to determine what kind of impact the surrounding neighborhood is going to is, is going to be subjected to. And then finally, which I'm gonna, we're gonna like, but we're gonna do like more formal, more formal comments written. But this is an environmental justice community and you should, and I don't, I'm not sure what Eagles project process is in using EJ screen, but it should be used in determining like whether or not permits should even move forward because an acknowledgement of the toxins that people are exposed to is not enough. Like it has to be used as some sort of like public health protections way. So people aren't being constantly subjected to being exposed to toxic materials. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much for your comment. I really appreciate you doing that. Give you guys a minute here just to see if anyone else would like to make a comment tonight. I don't have any hands raised right now. Okay, Mr. Schmider, hold on one second and I will go ahead and unmute you. Did you change your mind? No. Okay. Hold on one second. All right. You should be able to speak now.
Okay. Can you hear me? Okay.
Yes.
All right. Well, I'm, I'm kind of peeing in with what the person before me spoke that, you know, the, the MDEQ was cited by the, by the EPA back in January of 2016 and, and was cited for various aspects that were determined to be racist. And I realized that they, the state kind of said, no, that's not true, but that's what happened. And that was what their finding was. And, and that had to do with the testimony and how the thing was conducted and so on. And so I know that there's going to be a hearing in Genesee, Michigan over in, in the township, township hall. That's a long way from where the people in the neighborhood that live in public housing and other low income housing and that live in the other individual rental homes and mobile home parks. It's quite far away from them. And so, you know, it's, it's kind of business as usual with the Department of Environmental Quality. And that really disappoints me. And that's why, you know, I don't like throwing the word racism around. But it's, that's what happens. That's the effect of this is that low income and people of color. That, you know, it's kind of like if we said, well, okay, we're gonna, we know, we're in the days of outhouses and we're saying, well, let's put our outhouses by where the river is by the people of color. I mean, that's kind of what we're doing one more time here. And so I that that is not a concern to the Department of Environmental Quality is, is just a scandal. I mean, it's just outrageous and very disappointing that in several years now, it's, it's about almost five years now since that previous determination was made by the EPA. Nothing's been done about that. Oh, no, we don't get into that. And so this is, and the prayer center, I'm on the board also. The St. Francis Prayer Center has tried to create an environment in a very busy urban area where people can come and play, pray, relax, reflect. And although some of their physical needs are met with various things, but a lot of it is also, it's a spiritual place. And to have this facility built that close to it and the noise and, and all the other aspects of it would render that area absolutely useless. It would be like, you know, going out on a very busy street and saying relax. So I thank you for this opportunity and I hope people will be coming to the hearing on the 11th at the township hall so that they will also speak their minds. I'm disappointed also in the people of Genesee Township who are very thoughtless about the fads, not close to me. So put it over there in the corner. It's far from us, but it's moving it closer and closer to people of color and low income. And I don't know how people can look in the mirror and determine that is good behavior, but apparently they use a different frame of reference than I do. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Schmider. Appreciate your comment. All right. I have a hand up. Anthony Pachoric. Let me go ahead and unmute you. And if you want to just state your name for the record and any affiliation that you might have, you should be able to speak.
Hello, my name is Anthony Pachoric. I'm a citizen of Flint. I represent Michigan United. Um, I just wanted to say that like one of the issues that's getting grazed over here is that the area that is going to be near the proposed Ajax facility is also located to one of our parks in most often used areas in that area. Blue Bell Park as well as a, not too far from Kersley Reservoir, which is going to be our backup water source. So I think it's incredibly inconsiderate and just terribly short sighted that such a company would want to come into an environmentally justicely abused city and just be like negligent of that water issue. Uh, so I think that that's just absolutely ridiculous, but um, I am very concerned again with the air quality from the filters. It didn't sound like it would be able to be able to process appropriately the eight, 89.9 tons of estimated carbon monoxide that will be released in that atmosphere near there. A lot of these chemicals that are in the asphalt are just directly related as again said to health issues. Again, this is already a community that has been environmentally damaged and we're wanting to put our youth and those people in that neighborhood at further risk and exposure to a shorter lifespan. It's unacceptable. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comment. Just want to make sure nobody else would like to make a comment tonight before we close the meeting. Okay, just want to double check and make sure I don't have any other hands raised before we go ahead and close the hearing portion of the night. We do have a couple of other things to go over. So if you want to hang on. Double checking here. Okay. All right. With that, I'm going to go ahead and just read a brief closing statement to officially close the hearing. And then we'll have a little bit more conversation about some other things before we close the actual meeting out tonight. So to close the hearing for tonight, thank you so much for taking the time to participate in this hearing tonight. We appreciate your interest in protecting Michigan's air quality. As indicated at the beginning of the hearing, the public comment period will close at midnight on August 16th, 2021. All interested parties, anyone who provided comments during the public comment period and anyone who attended this public hearing will be directly notified of the final decision on this proposed permit. The hearing is now closed, so thank you again. Okay, so as promised, there's a couple of other things that I want to go over before I let you guys go. This, what I have on the screen, and I know I still have a couple of people that have called in. So I'm going to probably annoyingly read this address for you, but in case you want to jot it down. So one thing I just want to go over is there are a bunch of other ways that you can submit an official comment for the record before the comment period closes. So as of right now, like we said earlier, that is August 16th. So you can mail us a comment in writing. You can put it on notebook paper. You can type it out. You know, we take them in all different ways. So you can mail that right to us at Annette Switzer, that she's our permit section manager. And if you do that, the address is Eagle, so E G L E AQD or Air Quality Division and the address is PO Box 30260. And that's in Lansing. And the zip code on that is 48909. Another really great way that we have is you can send a comment via email. So I know we had gotten a comment about accessibility to the township hall. So I want to just make sure that folks know that there are these other mechanisms. You know, you don't have to attend this hearing or, or come next week to submit a comment in person. And you can send them into our email address, which is eagle-aqd-pti-publiccomments@michigan.gov. That's E G L E dash AQD dash PTI public comments. So P is in Paul, T is in Tom, I is in Eagle, public comments. That's all one word. And that's at Michigan.gov. Probably the easiest way though to leave us a comment is if you want to write it down yourself and you don't have time to mail it in or you just want to let us know what you think about it, you can call our voicemail. It's a public comment voicemail specifically created for folks who have either accessibility issues, internet limitations, things like that. Give us a call and leave your comment on the voicemail. So that number is 517-284-0900. And those are all, you know, considered just like any other comment. There's nothing less about giving us a call in on voicemail. The other thing is I know that it was mentioned that there's another hearing next week. There is not another hearing. It is not going to be like this. We won't have an information session where we talk to you about stuff. There won't be necessarily a Q and A, anything like that. There's no formal meeting whatsoever. What that, the purpose of that is, is for folks, if they want to walk in and give us a comment verbally into a recording device, that's the purpose of that. So that is August 11th and it will be at the Genesee Township Hall. So if you know of anyone who feels strongly about giving that comment in person, please, you know, encourage them to do that or pass along any of these other ways that folks can make a comment about this proposed action. So like I said, next week is not a hearing. So I just want to be very, very clear on that. It's not going to be like it was tonight. It's just simply a place where folks can walk in and give us a comment face to face if they want to. All right. So that being said, you can find a lot of other information on the web. And I know that some folks have limitations with internet. So you can give us a call, even if you just took that number down, that 517-284-0900 number. You know, it's a public comment mailbox, but if you're like, hey, Jennifer, can you get me some of this other information you talked about? The proposed project summary, which is like a very high level write-up of what Ajax is asking for in some of the review that we did, some of the pertinent information that we talked about tonight. The technical fact sheet dives really deep into those, into the regulations, the health-based screening levels, all the things that we considered when we drafted the permit. You can also find the proposed permit terms and conditions if you would like to look at those. We'll definitely post a link to the recording. We'll also post PDF of all the slides that we showed tonight. So in case you were only able to call in or you want to go back and look at them later, those will be available for you. So you can get to those by going to Michigan.gov/air. You're going to choose that public notice button on the side and then you want to choose new source review permits open for, excuse me, open for comment. So that's going to be the things that we have open for comment right now. There's also ones that are kind of pending decision and then that have had decisions made so far, if you're interested in other things like that. On the slide that I have up right now is who you can contact if you have other questions. So if you're listening tonight and you didn't want to make a comment tonight because you're still kind of processing all the information that we gave you, you end up having other questions. These folks are the ones that you heard from tonight that you can give a call and ask those questions to. So I, what I'm going to do is I'm just going to give out Amber's contact information. Sorry about that, Amber, but I want to just make sure that folks have at least, that are on the phone can at least jot down one phone number to get in contact with somebody. And if folks have questions that Amber can. Folks have questions that Amber can't answer, she's always more than happy to pass you along to someone who can. Make sure you get to the right person. So if you want to send her an email, oh yeah, no problem, Amber. So her email address, it's also one of the easiest ones to remember because I, spelling Steph's last name, I, I spelled it wrong on here, I see right now, so just ignore that. And I know even I had someone say, Jennifer, do you want me to look at that for you? And I said, no, 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 I got it. And I did it wrong anyway. So. Take down Amber's. So Amber's is the word brown, like the color, and then the letter A, the number thirty-nine, and it's at michigan.gov, so brownA39@michigan.gov. And her phone number, where you can contact her directly, is five one seven six four eight six two one six. So hopefully that is helpful for folks. Again, we greatly, greatly appreciate you taking the time out of your night tonight. Like Mary Ann mentioned earlier. It's a beautiful, gorgeous summer evening. I know there's other things that you would rather do, so your dedication to this process and to interacting with us is, is greatly appreciated. More information on that to come. If you did register with your email address, you'll definitely be getting some follow-up information from the meeting tonight. So. Again, greatly appreciate everybody taking the time out tonight, and maybe we'll see you next Wednesday if you decide to come make a comment at that time. So take care and we'll talk to you soon.